Welcome to Santa Barbara Talks with Josh Molina. It's my pleasure today to be here with Dan LaBerge, who's running for Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Trustees. And I'm really excited about this conversation because from what I've heard around town and just sort of doing some, some research on him. He sounds like a really, really great candidate, really interesting person. And so I'm looking forward to learning more and having a good conversation about the issues facing the Santa Barbara School Board. Dan, how are you today?
I'm doing quite well, Josh, and thanks so much for doing this. This is a new venture for me, both into such a significant school board race and politics of any kind, because that's just not my MO, but also Zoom. It's podcasts and all is all brand new for me, so I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm sure you'll do, you'll do great. Just be yourself. That's always sort of the key to connecting in this format and, you know, in a campaign. So let's talk a little bit. You are running for school board. We're moving to district elections this year. And so we have a seat that's open with incumbent or current office holder Kate Ford. So she's stepping down and we have, we're going to have a new member of the school board. It's sort of guaranteed and you have decided to throw your name in there. And so why don't you tell us a little bit about why you want to run for, for Santa Barbara School Board?
Well, I would say the first and foremost reason behind my desire to do this is that I'm a parent of three children that are in the district and I have watched them rise and fall for differing challenges, no, just not, probably not dissimilar to many families. But after watching COVID and watching what it did to our district from the top to the bottom, the pressure on the teachers, the administration, putting lives at risk, challenging parents to make decisions whether to send their kid, demass their child, vaccine their child. And, and then I, I see where we stand now and I see superintendent's office that's embroiled and fallout of seasoned employees. There's a problem there and we are household of, if we see a problem, let's, let's work to fix the problem. Let's work to help to solve the problem. Let's make a difference somehow. And I'm in a position to serve and that's what this is about. It's, it's, I'm very fortunate that I have the capacity to do that and I want to offer whatever help I can.
Great. Yeah. So we, we know through reporting, my reporting, other media reporting that there's a lot of turmoil at the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And whether you, somebody wants to put a positive frame on that or negative, the facts are that we have an entirely new cabinet. We have people who were planning to retire at the Santa Barbara Unified School District, just taking jobs, some of them for less money. And those who will talk on the record will talk about it being a culture that is different and not accepting of their ideas. And a lot of that is, okay, you could sort of say that's political. Let's worry about the kids. But I think people fail to forget that turmoil at the top affects the kids on the ground, regardless of who's to blame, regardless of what side you're on, you know? You can, you can defend or you can criticize. But the fact of the matter is that these people are in charge of students and that's where the conversation should be, not in administration. So let's talk about students. What's your take on Santa Barbara Unified and what are your ideas for diversity, inclusion, improving test scores, closing the achievement gap? So many of those issues that the district's been dealing with for years and across the state, you know, it's a problem. What, what are some of your thoughts to how to address kids in the district and their educational needs?
Well, you know, it's a multi-headed challenge. There is no singular quick solution. No one's going to come in and make a quick fix. But I mean, it definitely starts with being willing to ask hard questions. And I think a top-down approach is a big piece of that. We can't have our teachers ultimately being worried and stressed what their regional or, or, or local administrators are going to have to do because of what's going on at, at the county or, or even the city level. We need uniformity. We need synergy. It starts there because as someone who has managed large groups of employees, when they're uncertain, everyone else is uncertain. And you, and even our best teachers can't filter that indefinitely. So we need some, some synergizing and I know that they're making strides. I'm an outsider looking in at the superintendent's office. I, I read what you read. I hear what you hear. I have done some outreach to those in the district who are a little more closely connected. And, um, you know, we have two choices. We can cut, cut ties right now and try to start over from scratch someplace. It doesn't mean we're going to bring back the 30 or 40 employees that have, um, you know, very, you know, disappeared so quickly. And in this labor market, I, I worry how we're going to find able-bodied people to fill those roles, especially without their institutional knowledge. But, you know, I think we also owe it to ourselves that this decision was made for some valuable reasons. And, and, and not knowing Superintendent Maldonado personally, you know, I know she comes with a world of education. I know that she's our first Latino, Latina superintendent. And there is always a transition time when you bring in someone new at the top. And some people come in with significant management skills and some don't. And there is a learning curve that comes with that. And we have to be willing to ask the hard questions and then make, you know, appropriate decisions. I'm not going to sit outside here and go, oh, this is absolutely the bottom line because I don't know yet. And even the conversations I've had with people that are much closer to the problem aren't, you know, they're not in a position, it's not appropriate for them to be fully candid. So, but it's something that has to be addressed. As far as achievement, I, I, I sat on the site council last year at the junior high and I looked at the star testing scores and they're not the end all be all. I'm not saying, oh, standardized testing, it's, it's a data point. It's something that needs to be considered. But when I looked at some key metrics, when you look at the drop from seventh grade to eighth grade, there was actually a decline in certain aspects. Something's amiss. Okay. Well, I said, well, this is post-COVID, you know, maybe we need to be a little bit more critical of this. And then you look back, you see this has preceded COVID and this has been ongoing problem. I think a lot of it has to be tied to our literacy, literacy capability. We have a large population of students that have been either stuck in an ESL certification or need, you know, unique assistance to help them get out of that. Because so much of everything they're going to do in school comes back to literacy. And if their literacy is challenged, how are they going to apply it to other subjects? And I can speak to this firsthand because I have three children at home. My eldest is 13 at the junior high. He was reading by seven, eight years old, he was reading a thousand pages a week. I mean, he's like myself and my wife where he just gobbled up words and it came easy to him. Well, our daughter, uh, she seemed fine, no problems through first and second grade, but little delayed in second grade for her reading capacity. Oh, well, you know, third grades, that's the year we really want to focus on. Seems to be what people use as a gauge. Well, third grade was her COVID year. And so all students took a big hit. And so we concerned, we, you know, we read to our students constantly, our students, our children constantly and, you know, and her perception, engagement of the story was fine. But there was a redundancy to want to pick up the same books over and over. Well, maybe that's just the age. Maybe she's just maturing into this. Come fourth grade, we had to reassess and it turns out she has a form of dyslexia. I think nothing, you know, huge and totally debilitating, but she needed support and it was something we didn't have the skills to do. We were so fortunate to be at Adelante Charter School because it's a small population and they threw the resources around her and gave her the hug that she needed. And she made real strides last year, but she's still struggling. And so I've got just two children here that are addressed to this. And now I have a third child who is completely different than the other two. And he's one of those boys who just needs to run and jump and be active. And he wants to get his hands in something and he's going to be engaged in an entirely different capacity. So if I look at the 13,000 or so students out there with so, so many diverse challenges and, and you know, you could, you could just, we could spend the whole hour just listing all the things that they may be up against. We need to do better at being able to create unique programs that really support those individual needs. They need to be ability to be small pods, intermittent classrooms, things of that nature to where we can really help those children, especially by the sixth grade, but even into junior high and of course, high school, we can't allow those children to fall through cracks and not give them the capacity to go out and control their own futures and their own lives. And I speak to this personally because I, I was a product of the unified district and I went through a different elementary school, sometimes two every single year growing up because I was raised by a single mother here locally. And she had to move a lot. She didn't have a lot of money. We didn't, you know, I was poor, but didn't know it. But I had a very segmented education and by the time I hit high school, I was unprepared. And I barely got through high school for differing reasons. But I barely got through high school figuring, well, I'm just not academically inclined. Only to go on later to junior college, sit on the dean's list for two years, get into Cal Poly Business Program, which was highly impacted, and then go on to get my master's degree. Everybody has their own path. Everybody needs their own unique stimulation. We only have so many teachers. We have to look maybe outside the district. We need to borrow solutions that work and, and, and we need to come together and really learn to share resources and systems better. I think it feels like many of our, our schools are fairly siloed. This comes out of a nonprofit perspective. They, they're lacking resources, whatever it may be. And I, I don't dare share excess of this because I may need it next week. If they're, if they're function of a point of scarcity, it's very hard for them to have open doors and sharing with their fellow, with their fellow campuses. We need to change that dynamic. We need to change that culture.
Great. A couple of follow-ups there, a couple of questions. One, you mentioned that your, your kids are in Adelante Charter School, which is a dual language immersion school. And we know that Santa Barbara Unified has a large population of emerging language learners and it's part of, it has in the past been their focus. I don't know that they have a, a person in charge of that at this point in time. They did in the past. And part of that is trying to understand students and language and recognizing that students who struggle with the reading and the language early on, what does that mean and what does that say? And we know that too many kids are unfairly categorized, right? As in, in the special ed learning programs because of those language issues. And the district's trying to address that and reduce that just because you don't, just because a student doesn't speak English well, doesn't mean that they should be in a special ed program. But having students with, or having teachers with the sophistication and training to be able to understand those differences is part of the, part of the challenge. Can you talk about why it was important for you to put your kids in a dual language immersion charter school backed by Santa Barbara Unified? Of course, why is knowing those two languages important from your perspective?
Well, I mean, if you look, if you look outside our little fishbowl of Santa Barbara and our state of California, which I'm, you know, we're so grateful to live here. But then you start looking globally and you realize that most of the world speaks multiple languages, you know, right from the get-go. And the value of that is twofold. One, it's, it provides cross-cultural opportunity. You can't understand what someone else is saying, how can you create any kind of understanding between you and comprehension of where someone is coming from, why they have that perspective? If, if you can't, if you can't communicate. But beyond that, one of the real pivotal movements that was presented to us is the idea of cognition at a young age. And if the brain is functioning in two languages at a very young age, when it's, when its pathways are completely open, because I've gone, since my kids went, I've tried to interact with them. I've gone to school at City College and taken, you know, the Spanish class. I'm, I'm trying, but it's so much harder now. When those pathways are open, their children, their brains develop in a different form, format than those who don't. And, you know, we have friends who have kids in trilingual, trilingual schools. And I, that's like, my hat's off to them. That's a little more than we can handle. But having that opportunity so close to us, having a small campus size, having a community that was so committed to not only bilingual, but bi-cultural education. We live in not bi-cultural community, but a multicultural community. We should have a rich knowledge of all that is around us, our, our true history of California that dates back to its origins. You know, the Chumash are just an incredible population and their civilization here that predates, you know, so much else in California. It's, it's amazing. It's so rich and you're not going to get that in mainstream education necessarily. And it's changing, but it's slow. We had the opportunity to thrust our kids right into that. And I'll, and the caveat to me, Josh, as well as I get to walk my kids to school. And if they need something, someone forgets a lunch or the school needs some, you know, oh, we're out of this. I just, I just walk over and give it to them. I go take care of it. So both my wife and I have been highly involved in all aspects of participation at the school, from selling pizza to, to setting up movie nights to, uh, you know, supporting the teachers with whatever they need in their classrooms. Serving on the board there for, you know, about three years on the PTSO. We, you know, we feel and we're very privileged, absolutely privileged to be able to be active participants in our school and we feel it makes a difference.
Yeah, that's great. That parental involvement makes, makes such a difference for, for your kids and you, you know, everybody in the whole school.
No, yeah, they can't, you know, and we, when we really try to pull more parents into the system, but it's hard. Some of it is, is language, some of it is cultural. And those cultural barriers, as our recent, our, our current principal has shared with us, especially those who are first or maybe even second generation Americans, they feel their responsibility is, you know, I'm, I'm getting, my child is going to be clean and dressed and to school on time and that, that's, you don't need me helping make decisions, but we do. Because we need input in multiple planes in order to make effective decisions for everyone. We can't, clearly we can't make a decision that's going to solve all the problems for everyone. We can't. But we have to try to get as much input as we can to make, you know, just make those, the, the decision that's going to be best for all.
Yeah. The other thing you had mentioned that I wanted to follow up on is you mentioned a third child and I, and I don't know the story. I know a little bit about it, but there's this, um, a story behind how your family came to be, uh, and, um, the parents of that child. So would you mind sharing that story and talking a little bit about that?
Um, it's, it's, uh, it's one definitely near and dear to my heart. It changed our lives in so many ways. But, um, 13 years ago, my wife started a nonprofit here in town called Mother's Helpers. And we provide material support to mothers typically, but sometimes fathers in need. And that may be someone with a young child, uh, zero to 12 months is our general focus, uh, but also mothers expecting. And we've learned as we dove into this, and again, it was see a need, fill a need. Some mother was looking for a crib. Next weekend, I know we're driving up to her house in Orchid with my truck literally filled with a baby shower of stuff that we just sort of recruited off of social media and Craigslist and such. And, um, the nature of my wife is, oh, well, okay, we're doing this. Well, I guess what, honey? We're a nonprofit corporation. Huh? Okay. What do we have to do? It was very passive thing in the beginning and it grew and it grew. Starts and stops because this was just kind of a family endeavor, a few volunteers. Six years ago, a little over six years ago, a woman who we had probably helped early on with just basic goods, put into our social media chat, she was looking for childcare. And this young lady, Dani Hearn's, she was involved at Santa Barbara City College in their Spark Program. Really trying to make good choices for herself, but she was young and unsupported. Uh, well, the Spark Program provided childcare for her and her then one-year-old during the day, but not on the weekends and or evenings when she had to work retail in order to support herself. And so she was looking for childcare. This is something Mother's Helpers doesn't do, but I, I really think it would be a natural evolution and an intelligent evolution for us to do. My wife said, oh, of course we'll help because that's what we do. And, um, so it was just very part-time in the beginning. But as we got to know Dani further and she recognized she might have a support component here, she believed that she needed to go into a program to really, really right her ship, something where she was just solely focused on her to figure out what was important and make a path forward. And so she found such a program, but it required her to be unencumbered. No phones, no computers, no children, no pets, so on and so forth. And so she reached out to us and said, you know, would you be willing to take care of my son for the duration of this program? And, you know, it was a big ask, but I, you know, I applaud her for, for being willing to do that because you can't, you know, she couldn't think forward to protect and provide for her child unless she took care of herself first. She was putting on her own oxygen mask first. And so we became this little boy's guardian. Uh, so that in case something came up, we could make decisions that were appropriate for him. Well, shortly thereafter, it was the, um, early weeks of August, we got a phone call very early in the morning that Dani Hearn's had died in a car crash up in the Mesa. And sleeping in the other room was her little 13-month-old boy. And he hadn't really no, no safe haven and no appropriate place to go. And we, you know, being who we are, it was in a way we would thrust them into a foster system. And our family was full. I mean, our capacity was full. Our resources were taxed. And, but, you know, you know, we didn't have choices. And, you know, we only made, made the only choice we could make and have a conscience about it. And by this point too, our, our children were getting attached. He, he knew us. We were a constant. Whereas prior to that, he was kind of being shuffled around a lot. And so he, he was fitting right in. He kind of looked like our kids. I mean, it was, it was in some ways easy, but just immeasurably hard. We never thought, oh, we, you know, two, we've got this now. We, we know how to be parents. Three broke the mold and everything. Uh, they just, you know, there's only two parents. So, you know, you can't go in three directions at once and, um, you know, resources get, get spread thin. And, uh, the community really rallied around us and, and that first year and a half was a make it or break it experience. But we've come through it so much stronger and so much better connected. And poor Lucas still has some challenges. He's gone through some periods of grieving, something that he doesn't even really understand or know. Uh, we've tried to be open with him about what his life experience is and try to shield him when we need to. We've worked with hospice and com to try to support him. And then the school has been just amazing in rallying around him as well. And he's turned into just a, a shining star, a boy of constant smiles and laughter and energy. And, uh, he's just really well-liked and, um, you know, the family's complete. And so now my wife, instead of bringing in more children, brings in fostered. And so we do that too. And so, um, we have very, very full lives and, but it doesn't mean I don't have capacity to do more.
Yeah. Yeah. And your, your wife is, is Robin Unander LaBerge, correct? You mentioned her a few times. So we give her that, that credit. So you two, uh, started a nonprofit called Mother's Helpers and you're, you're literally Mother's Helpers, you know, with this incredible story that you've just told.
A lot of people like to say, you know, when, when something happens to us, you know, there's a reason or, you know, you need to make lemon, lemonade out of lemons kind of thing. And, and, and we constantly asked ourselves for many years, why do we keep doing this with Mother's Helpers? Because it's, it's one of those endeavors that we focus on really just giving a gift, really unrestricted, do what you want with it, sell it, give it to someone else when you're done with it. Give it back, come upgrade it if you want. It's really just an open-handed gift. Many services require you to jump through a lot of hoops, really in-depth background information. And we're pretty superficial. If you express you have a need, you have a child currently or one that you're about to give birth to, we're going to be there for you. And, but we don't always see a lot of backstory. We don't even often hear what happens afterwards. We know it's the right first step. It's an empowerment component to young women who are in a really vulnerable state. Hey, I've got this stuff now. I don't, I don't feel fully alone. I can probably reach out and they do. What, who else can I resource through? And there's so many amazing nonprofits in the community that can help individuals like that. But a lot of times mothers are hesitant to reach out because if I, if I, if I go here, then maybe I'm going to compromise when I'm getting over here. And so we can act as, as mentors in that regard. And it's an area we're working actively to expand as our volunteer base increases. But it, you know, we don't get to see how the feel-good story, you know? Oh, this, this child, you know, overcome, overcame this or this family now is here. We don't often hear that and we would constantly kind of, well, all right, we're doing this because we know it's helping. We know in our hearts it's helping. It's doing the right thing. But then when Lucas came into our lives, it's just like, oh, maybe that's why we've been doing this. And we try to find the good in everything. I mean, it's just who we are by nature and we just keep moving forward.
Wow, that's, that's amazing. Considering the position you're running for as a member of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board, how important do you think it is to be a parent when you're serving in a role that makes decisions about 13,000 students?
I don't think it's mandatory, but I, if you can't look through that lens, you're missing a huge part of the equation. And you know very well as a parent, these decisions impact us greatly. And from when school time starts to whether there's, you know, suitable and appropriate nutrition on campus, to when holidays are, uh, is my child safe? You know, are they receiving any special education support that they need? Uh, you know, are they being protected from bullying? I mean, the list just goes on and on and on and on. And to sit on the outside and just, I, I hope it's okay. You know, my mother had to. She was a single mom. She had no choice. Just whatever the school gave, that's what I got. And, you know, I, I made it through and a lot of parents would say that's okay. I, I, I think that it's, I think it's vital to at least have known what that experience is like. Not to say you're an active parent now, but to know what that was like. Because when an impassioned, like my wife, Mama Bear comes at you with really, you know, valid viewpoint, it may not be something that's applicable to this argument, or it may not be something that we can fundamentally apply now. But when they come at you impassioned about something regarding her, her, her family, you have to know how that feels. You have to appreciate that and you can't do that not being a parent. And, and that doesn't mean the board shouldn't be filled with other educational professionals as well. It should be some blend of the two. But coming at this from a political standpoint, I, I'm saddened and baffled, even in our community, in our city council, that we have to have political races. I'd rather, like, you know, they're talking about raising 20, $30,000 to run a school board race for an unpaid volunteer job. I'd rather raise that money and give it to a school that needs it. You don't have to have a bake sale this year. You don't have to have 30 bake sales this year here. Do something good with it. Make a difference. Instead, people are printing up, you know, constant paraphernalia and flyers being mailed and tossed into the trash. And I, I don't want to be party to that. I want to go out and meet as many people as I can. Of course, you have to have some printed material. I'm going to keep it to a minimum. And just really focus on getting my message out, using whatever media sources that will bother to hear from me to say, hey, let's not make this political. Let's make this about the kids. Let's make this about the administrators. And really, most importantly, the ones in between there, the ones who need our most support, our biggest heroes are our teachers. And as a parent, you might've thought them important or heroes before, but through COVID, and when you got to send your kids back to school, they were, they were, they were superstars. They were better than anything on Marvel by far.
Yeah. Santa Barbara Unified famously missed the window to reopen during the pandemic. There was that period where the, the case numbers had dropped and schools had applied and Santa Barbara School District waited. And by the time they were ready to do it, they, it was like October, November came and the cases spiked and so they couldn't do it. And, you know, um, there, there are people obviously with kids on the Santa Barbara Unified, but, um, there is something about like every morning having to think about your kid going to school or staying home, about all of the things that happen in a child's day that the parent has to be involved with, that you have a richer understanding when you experience it than if you're just talking theory. And there's nothing wrong with talking theory, uh, but it is, um, just sort of a deeper connection, you know, when you have that. So that's for the voters to, to decide, you know, on, on that issue. But I do, do agree with you there that those, and when you're a parent, like literally every minute of every day is thought about through the lens of your kids. And you can't really know what you don't know. Yeah. You know, you know.
You can glean it, you can glean it from, you know, the people's stories, but it doesn't mean you make it from a, a fully invested choice. And, you know, you think about it, I, 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 I can date myself a little bit. And I went to school for a short time in New England and, you know, we did air raid drills in New England. I can remember diving under the desk. There were, I don't remember fire drills. I remember air raid drills. Well, now our kids are having to deal with, you know, shooter drills. And, uh, you know, and sending your child off to school and is bad enough knowing that and the fear and risk. But as the children get older, they understand it. They see the news and they know in their heart that this is something that's out there. And, you know, touch wood, at least at our, our district level, they haven't had to face that firsthand. But of course, Ila Vista did and UCSB students. But firsthand, these kids, my 13-year-old thinks about that. He carries that on his heart when he goes to school and it just tears me apart. It just absolutely tears me apart that he, you know, instead of worrying about meeting his first girlfriend or, you know, did he get his homework in on time? Or, you know, things of that nature, what's he's going to do with his friends this weekend? He can't, you know, can't be clean to do that. And that's, that's just wrong. It's wrong on so many levels.
Yeah.
And as a parent, like I said, I don't know that, you know, you get it, but you don't.
Um, you know, we've got about 10 or 15 more minutes here, so I want to, uh, ask you, and we kind of dabbled into it indirectly, uh, just a second ago about the politics of the, the contest. And, um, a lot of times with these contests, we tend to in the media, uh, the activists, the parties tend to frame them as, uh, one group versus another group. And, uh, we know that it shouldn't be that way. These are nonpartisan races. But as a practical matter, that's how it happens. And we know that the Democratic Party has a lot of power and influence. And I don't mean that in a pejorative sense. What I mean is that they organize and they have volunteers and they make calls and they walk. And there's a lot of infrastructure there for candidates who are backed by the Democratic Party. And that's very hard to overcome if you don't have that endorsement. That's not to say it has not happened. Um, it has happened. Uh, Virginia Alvarez, I believe is an example of that on the school board. But I want to ask you about your politics. Okay. Are you a Republican? Are you a Democrat? There are people who don't know you, who are trying to distinguish you between, you know, the very conservative candidates versus the very liberal or, you know, what is your party registration and how do you approach these issues?
Well, it's very simple to me. I've been indoctrinated with the Democratic Party since I can remember. Uh, my mother and stepfather, uh, in the, once they reached the San Diego Valley, I Uh, in the, once I reached the San Diego Valley, um, I was at fundraisers and barbecues for Gary Hart, Bill Wallace, uh, Gail Marshall. Um, my mother was involved in Rape Crisis. I went with her when she would present to the high school and I was sort of her assistant of sorts. I am incredibly liberally minded. I, I, I am registered Democrat. I've always voted that way. Um, I can't say that I've never voted for an independent candidate in my lifetime, but uh, I don't really want. Party politics anymore. I don't think, and I think if we look on a larger scale, it's effectualism is creating something polarized. It is, it's not solution oriented. And I'm not willing to roll the dice with my children, let alone anybody else's children, on things getting mired down in. Division and lacking uh, inability to work across the aisle and just create effective solutions, create consensus, talk to stakeholders and figure out. Look, this, we have a problem here. Let's fix it. And no, you know, the party only goes to here. Well, no, we, we have to take those next two steps in order to really create an integral system to resolve our problems. You know, our superintendent of schools, you know, she may have her own politics, but she's not functioning from a partisan standpoint. Why should those who govern her? And, and, and then it comes back, I'll take one step further. You know, you say it's kind of always been this way, but. Why are we having to infuse money into these races to self-promote as opposed to effectively putting those monies into school? If there, if, if people are willing to just kind of nurture a candidate and, and nudge them and budge them and twist them or shape them so that they have an image in order to get elected. Our priorities are wrong. And lastly, I would say on that subject. And, and, and is that now with the district election, we have a very small community. We have a very walkable district. We have been entrenched within our educational system here in a community. My outreach is tremendous and with or without a, an endorsement or two. I don't, I'm not in, intimidated by getting out and shaking hands, meeting people individually, allowing podcasts like this, news articles to come out. And let people make a real educated choice. Um, it's uh, um, you know, this, and, and a midterm election can be won by fifteen hundred, two thousand votes. I mean, our last city council race was one. Sided by fourteen different votes against an independent and I think there was forty-four hundred votes total cast. So it's a, it's a winnable election with or without an endorsement.
Did you seek the Democratic Party endorsement?
I did. I went through the process because as I was counseled and I have some people who've been very entrenched in politics as, as, as my supporters and. While they're not campaign managers, um. It was, it was suggested that it would be a good experience to go through and it was, it was not an easy experience to go through. The questionnaire was incredibly lengthy. Uh, very invasive. Um, it really tries to kind of corner you into a position. And hey, that's what they're doing. They're promoting their platform. This is what they want to go going forward. But for someone like myself who wants to, who, who thinks liberally, most of this I am in support of, probably all of it. But I don't want to be cornered. I want to be able to really be able to think about the problem rationally and come up with solutions that. That are going to really impact, have the greatest impact and be the most successful.
And so presumably they endorsed the other candidate in their contest, not you.
They were very polite. They called me the next day. I mean, I felt so bad for them because by the time they got to me, I think they were listening to two or three hours worth of. Measures and candidates. And they said, well, you have fifteen minutes. I said, look, I'm going to make this short and sweet. I'm not a politician. I, I, you know, this is who I am. I filled out your questionnaires. You, you know more about me than some of my friends and. I, I, you know, I'm here to answer your questions. And I kept it very sweet. I don't know if that. It wasn't, I clearly didn't earn their, their, their vote, but I, you know, I wanted to make it easy on them because then after they were done, there was more candidates after me. They had to sit and come to some kind of resolve and vote. I was like. Oh, it was a horrible process for those there and, and they've taken upon it themselves to be involved in that. And I. I, I applaud them for that, but um, yeah, I wasn't, I didn't go into it expecting their endorsement and I'm not surprised they didn't offer it.
Okay, yeah. And so you've always voted and been politically involved or is this sort of a new experience for you to sort of?
Politically involved really only to the extent to, one, to, with fundraisers when I was younger. And then secondly, you know, doing some outreach with candidates. Where I really wanted to have a more, better insight, similar to the school. I wanted to have a more hands-on approach, understanding who they were or where they were going. Um, but generally speaking, you know, I'm, I'm focused on raising a family. I'm focused on a nonprofit. I'm focused on being part of our schools because those are my priorities right now. And. As you know, you've mentioned you have a seventeen-year-old. These years go quick and then all of a sudden they, they're not here anymore. You know, they're off making their own decisions in their own lives. And I, I have been. So grateful and, and so privileged to be able to stay home so much with my children and really know them and be part of their lives. Uh, and also watch it go by in a blink of an eye. And I'm not gonna, it's one of the reasons I'm not off in some capitalistic endeavor and just out making money because. You know, I'm, I'm taking advantage of the opportunity in front of me to really be part of my community, but part of. My community, my household and be engaged and connected and. And just savor every moment, the good ones and the bads. Cause like every family, we have tough days, but. Um, you know, we're just, we're just so fortunate, so lucky.
You know, I read on the Mother's Helper site that you became a dad, uh, you know, mid forties, right? Um, I, I think forty-five, I think, or forty-six or something. And uh, can you talk about how that changed you? I mean. Do you remember your lens of the world before you had kids and how, how, how did things change?
I, you know, uh, I, as we talked about, I, uh, I was one of those children who got placed into school young because my mother. She had no other resources to keep me out of school. So I was one, always the youngest in my class, the smallest in my class and. Um, and I, um, I, you know, it was, it was challenging. My parents were split when I was only a year old and. My dad lived on the other side of the country, so I would summers jump back and forth and back and forth and. Um, but I knew in my heart that I wanted to be a parent. I don't know, something about that was some, just very. Embedded within me. And I knew that if I want to be a parent, I want to do it better than my parents did. And no fault to them. I mean, they met young and they were impassioned and. So it took me a while to mature to a point where one, I was capable of really. Sitting across the table from a, a partner who was my equal or my better in this case, in many ways. Someone who could respect me, but I could ultimately respect and, and, and really partner with to create a future. And she knew this was something, you know, we were very open. Our first date was. It took about four hours, a little over four hours. And we, uh, we met at the late East Beach Grill for breakfast and, and we walked the beach and we just. We spent the whole morning together and um, we got to know a lot about each other. Um. And one of the things she obviously learned, this was something important to me. And so after we were married and. You know, got to get around to learning how to live with each other and all those fun things in the beginning. Uh, she pulled me down one day and she said, you know, you're the first, first person that I've ever had in my life that I can see myself having kids with. And. Like much uh, that my wife does, things move fast when those decisions are made. So um, next thing I know, we're trying and so what shifted for me mostly then was that, you know, I, I got to. I, I was sort of put into a position where you, you can't be selfish anymore. You have a much larger world around you that um, that needs to be taken into consideration. And up till then, I've been kind of just the gypsy. I've been enjoying life, wandering, exploring, getting lost, falling down, picking myself up. Lot of life experience, but now I was incredibly grounded, very focused. Uh, and it was like a huge growing up moment, you know, okay, forty-five, some people don't find it. I found it and, and my life changed dramatically since then with not a single regret in the world. These, these kids, as much as they make me want to pull my hair out, some days I just, I adore them. I am so lucky to have them. And they're such amazing human beings. And um, yeah, so don't get me all teary-eyed because that wouldn't look good. But um, um, yeah, and, and the addition of Lucas, just like I said, it just made our family complete. It, it uh. Uh, you know, we, and I know families that have adopted, he's just a ton of kids and I, I don't know how we could ever do more. Cause we're a house of three dogs, three kids, three cats. Um, and we take, we take on a lot and um, but I just, my hat's off to anybody who's ever served as a foster or, or adopted or. Just to just have a love for children and want to see them thrive and be happy. I mean, that should be our only aim for our children is just, just be happy, really be happy in who you are and what you are and what you want to do.
Great, okay. Uh, it sounds like Robin might be a great candidate too of herself some days, you know, in terms of.
She would, in some ways because of her legal background, she would bring a lot to the table and obviously I have her for counsel, but. Whereas I'm, and one of the reasons I'm the executive director for Mother's Helpers is I'm willing to put my face out there. I'm willing to talk to anybody. I don't. It doesn't bother me. As long as my conscience is clear, as long as I'm honest about what I'm doing. I, I don't have a problem with it. She's really good at it. She doesn't like to do it. It's not her nature. And so while she's an incredibly seasoned attorney, she doesn't really want to be a litigator. She doesn't want to get in front of a judge. Watch her do it and you'd go, oh my God, she's awesome. She, it, this is just, it, it, it takes, it takes that little extra step for her to do that. And, and so to have to be in the public light on a regular basis. It's not comfortable for her. Uh, you, you, like I said, you would not know it. She, we just had a presentation at. Uh, Mother's Helpers Center, uh, last Sunday, Senator Monique Lamone came home and presented, uh, uh, Lamone, uh. Presented us with a, her nomination for nonprofit of the year for her district. And it was such a, such a touchdown moment for us because it, it just really. Like all the years of effort and all the amazing volunteers and just, it was really great. And Rob got up and spoke and he's like, wow, she's really good. And she goes, I don't like doing that. And so, but for me, I don't, I don't mind it. I, this kind of communication is hard for me, you know, presenting in front of the DCC on this format. It's like. This is foreign, it's awkward. Uh, you know, I know some people do this every day and they've gotten used to it. I, I, I like to see people's faces. I want to really interact with them. I. I want to hear the intonation of their voice. I want to be in a surrounding to, to, that helps shape and the, the conversation and. Um, this is foreign to me. And so I, I hope I don't have to do too much more of this, but um. But like I said, for her, um, she can be bu- behind the scenes, at least for now. Who knows? Because she would be an excellent candidate. She'd be excellent at anything she does. So, and I, she'd have my full support.
Great. Well, I want to sort of give you the last word here before we wrap up on, on why people should vote for you. Before that, you know, it's. The reality is that, you know, we're seeing nationally, um, so much energy around school board races and it's become so. So political and so divisive. And you know, this contest is little different. You're not a Republican, you're not a conservative. You're not trying to roll back, you know, some educational policies. Uh, you sought the Democratic Party, so. It's not going to be framed in that way, but the way it's going to be framed, you know, is going to be. Uh, probably a challenge, you know, for you. You know, I don't know their strategy, but they're gonna. They're going to frame it in a way where they have their candidate and why their candidate is more qualified than you. And. And so that means you've got a, you've got a challenge. You've got an uphill battle. And, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying you can't win. I'm not writing you off. I'm not saying that at all, but I'm just saying from political punditry analysis perspective. There's some infrastructure there that you're going to have to, to overcome. And uh, you know, they have other candidates in Guelita where it is politically divisive. It is like a battle between. Left and right and the choices are very clear. Um, so I look forward to watching your campaign and how you deal with that and how you uh, get out the vote and. You know, your team, your network and you know, it's a smaller district, so it's a lot of face-to-face contact. It's knocking on doors. It's uh, letting them get to know your story over and over and over because you're probably going to get out raised in money. I don't know. We'll see. You know, uh, we can talk again in a few months and see where we're at. Um, but I just want to give you the last word, Dan, you know, because you have a lot to offer and your experience is very unique. There's no one else like you. Uh, just talk to people one last time about, you know, if they're like. Thinking about who to vote for, you know, in your district, why should they vote for you?
Well. I've spent some time over the last weeks. I mean, unfortunately, the announcement that the seat was available came. Just literally on my birthday in August eleventh and we didn't have a lot of time to really plan for this. Uh, hence a late start. Everyone is kind of having to rush to catch up. And I realized that this is an uphill battle without a team behind me. There's just, you know, but we never backed down to that kind of challenge. One other thing that we didn't talk about is I have a strong business acumen, not only running a nonprofit here in town, but I have a business degree from Cal Poly at San Luis Obispo. And a master's degree in business. And there is a business component to this as well. Um, we can't take these decisions that are going to come forth lightly. And I hope that voters that really care are going to look at those specific issues that one, I'm a parent. Two, I have a strong business background. Three, I'm a committed liberal and, and Democrat. Uh, and that I have ties to the nonprofit world that bring me to a position to really help those that are, that are most vulnerable, that are most challenged, that are most compromised. I've worked with like my whole board of directors for Mother's Helpers. It's all women. I, I was raised by a single mother. I have no problems working and synergizing with uh, female leaders and. I've spent time now with Wendy Sims Moten and uh, Virginia Alvarez. Um, and done outrage for Laura Capps, even though she's going to be departing. Um, and I look for their counsel because no one's going to come into this job and, oh, this is what I'm going to do and I'm going to, I'm going to do this. This has to come as a team effort and it's going to come through probably some hard discussions, willingness to ask hard questions. And look for consensus to build, you know, the future our children need and deserve. And it's a serious thing. It's not something that should be thrown to politics because we can hopefully. I- i- in our community, look outside and see the erosion of effective decision-making and overall effectiveness. Because of politicking as opposed to doing what's right. And I, you know, I, I believe that we can find two thousand voters in our district that can understand and appreciate that.
All right. Well, Dan LaBerge, thanks so much for your time. Good luck.
Pleasure meeting you and you're getting to, to know you better.
Yeah. Have a great day. Take care.